It being six o'clock, I called the December two thousand and twenty-four Town of Clayton Planning Board Meeting Order. You may now have roll call.
Good evening Chair, we'll do a roll call. Um Chair Moore?
Present.
Vice Chair Dupree?
Here.
Board Member Williams? Board Member Lee? Board Member Applewhite?
Here.
Board Member Lipscomb?
Present.
Board Member Saraski?
Yes.
Board Member Gleason? And Board Member Anita Bland is excused. And Board Member Spence? He's not gonna be here. Okay, he's excused as well. We do have a quorum, sir, thank you.
Thank you. A reminder to all to speak as clearly and loudly as possible into the microphone. I would try to remind people as we go along if it becomes hard to hear and hopefully I don't offend you if I should speak a little louder. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Black of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Next item on the agenda is adjustments of the agenda. Are there any adjustments?
No adjustments, sir.
Alrighty. Next item is number three administrative items. Mr. Armido?
Yes, Chair Moore and Board Members, this is just a quick revision that Heidi Holland, our Town Clerk, sent to you all. We're just changing that January twenty-seventh meeting back to the Tuesday of the January twenty-eighth. There was an oversight on my part. There's a meeting conflict for the council chambers, so that's been reflected. So just as a, as a minor administrative update for you all. There's no action necessary from the board at this time.
Alrighty, thank you. We next move to item four, approval of the minutes. Did everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes? Okay. Are there any corrections to the minutes needed? If not, I entertain a motion.
Let's take that.
Motion to approve by Board Member Dupree, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Williams, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item five, public meetings. Item five A, two thousand and twenty-four dash twelve, CZM, Front Street duplexes. We'll now turn it over to staff.
Hello Planning Board Members, the Chair, Mr. Moore. Today we have a two conditional rezoning. We'll start with the Front Street duplexes project. So this is a public meeting for a conditional rezoning, as I said, so. So this request is concerning two properties to rezon from residential high density to CZR, conditional rezoning residential. The two property sizes are point fourteen acres and point twenty-one acres. The existing use is vacant. I know maybe the aerial map may suggest there's a single family dwelling on it. But it was demolished, I think, last year if I remember correctly. So currently the two lots are vacant. For more context to the location is in the intersection of Church Street and East Front Street. So this is just to show that the public noticing was made within the requirements of the general statute. So two public noticing, two signs was posted for each of the lots. So for the concept plan, some of the key elements to it was it is about the construction of two duplexes. One duplexes on each lot. So there will not be any recombination of the lots, this will stay as two lots. There's a fifteen-foot shared driveway in the back of the property, so no parking spaces are visible from Front Street, um, East Front Street, sorry. They're proposing a connection to the existing sidewalk. And one entry is on the front of the facade. And I think the other one is at the back. And they, the applicant signed the voluntary compliance with the residential design guidelines for the UDO sections four point three, point forty-one. And then there's another one, section two, so that's comply with the materials and anything related to the single-family detached dwellings. I can provide more information into that residential design guidelines for the UDO. So about the consistency with the Conference of Grow Plant. We have a situation, I don't know if it's a GIS problem or if it was made like that, but there's two different land uses for that, the two properties. Fortunately, the two land use aligns with the project. But we might consider to review the future land use map in terms of, I mean, one property should have one land use on it. So in this case, it aligns with both, but maybe in another case it would not, so that's just a consideration. So yeah, the two land use are aligned with residential component into them. They allow a lot of density. So one is nine units per acre, the other one is twenty-five units per acre. So the proposed use aligns with both of the land uses. So for the consideration this evening, should the rezoning be approved? The concept plan and associated conditions of approval would be tied to the land in accordance with the general statute. And the staffer recommendation is recommends approval, so motion one on the provided consistent statement sheets. I can also navigate back to the conditions since I didn't talk about them that much. But the conditions are firmly attached to the use, so duplex dwelling would be the only authorizes use under that conditional rezoning. There's some condition attached to the construction materials. The shared driveway is also one of them. Something about also the access easement, a thirty-foot access easement for, I think it was, if I go back. On the right side of the, of the lot, I mean of the project. And then some sidewalk improvement for North Church Street also is in the condition of approval. So if you have any questions about that project, staff is here and also the applicant is present tonight.
Is there, are there any questions to staff?
Chair Moore, if I may, real quick, to add to staff's presentation, there was a technicality with regards to the neighborhood meeting. I've already spoken with the applicant. The neighborhood meeting was conducted at a date that is not what the UDO requires, which is. The UDO requires a neighborhood meeting to be done Monday through Friday from six to eight o'clock. Applicant had a great location, Deep River Brewery on a Saturday at eleven-thirty. I think I was excited at that opportunity just when I heard about it. So applicants committed to having a neighborhood meeting subsequent to the planning board. And staff is making sure that this, this oversight doesn't happen again, but I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that technicality. And we'll take care of that before we go to council in February. Thank you.
I have a question about the, the entries. You said one entry, but one of the units is on the front and one is in the rear?
Yes, sir.
So. So the people that are, the parking is in the rear, so the resident that have entry on the front have to walk around the building to enter their unit? I'm just confused about all of that.
So yes, so we have something in the UDO, I think that's part of the single-family residential design guidelines. And it states that for, for duplexes, in no instance shall the primary facade of the building contain fewer than one dwelling entrance. That's, that was one of the UDO requirements, because I think the intention was to giving the appearance of a single-family detached home. So I think that was the intention, but.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Is storm water, is there any concern with the impervious surface here or?
So.
For the acre?
So in terms of impervious surface coverage, the UDO doesn't have a percentage maximum. And I wanted to say that for storm control measures, is it less than an acre? So it's less than an acre, so that wouldn't be an issue for either of the properties.
How about the shared access easement and there'd be improvements in that shared access easement for parking? Is that a concern of the staff?
So that, that was a matter of discussion when we were conducting the, the TRC was doing the reviews. It's not a matter of discussion, it was seen as an alternative to having the garages and access off of Front Street to have it go along the backs. But we didn't see an issue with regards to having that shared driveway accessing the duplexes.
So the parking spaces in the access easement, I was thinking for consistency long-term, if somebody comes in else and requests that. That would be something that would be allowable by staff.
Okay.
But that was my concern. How about guest parking? In a lot of these situations, you might have, if it's a two-bedroom, you might have two single people renting together and then they might have guests over. And I guess it's just, do we feel like there's adequate off-street parking that's safe?
So.
Or own street parking, excuse me.
Yeah, the guest parking is generally a requirement for a single-family attached product and a duplex isn't one. So the two parking spaces is being provided per unit. I don't, can we look real quick and see what the duplex, we'll have to do a quick double check on the use, on the parking requirements for a duplex. Right now it's parked with two parking spaces per unit. We'll do a quick, Audrey, I can tell is looking that up real quick.
Go ahead with another question if you like.
Has a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brasky.
The, I have a couple of questions. One is, how does this relate to the down, is this, is this in the downtown plan? Is this section of Front Street in the new downtown plan? And how does that relate to the land use that was, we're calling out in there? Is it the same as what's in here? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. That was Sam, I thought it was, but I just wanted to make sure. Why are they not building sidewalk on Church Street? So there, there is a call out to install a sidewalk the length of the property, the ten-foot side. Oh, it's just not there, it's, they are gonna do it, it's just not being shown. Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's, that they're gonna install the sidewalk all around, okay. Thank you.
I have to find the requirement for parking spaces, so for duplex dwelling, it's two per dwelling unit. But we don't have anything about guest spaces for it. It's on page five hundred seventy-seven of the UDO.
So that would be two per dwelling unit, so that would be eight for four duplexes.
So you, the, the lots each have one duplex, so each lot will have four parking spaces.
So we're good there, okay.
So each parking space would be thirty-six, no? So the whole pad is thirty-six?
Nine foot wide by twenty-foot parking spaces.
The twenty-foot, ten-foot wide. For each parking space. Because the first duplex, I know the drawing is not the scale, as far as the parking spaces.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I have a question, I think it's along the lines of you're thinking, with the parking spots. If it's a fifteen-foot shared driveway coming in and then the parking paths will be next to the driveway, are they practically gonna be able to turn their cars? And I know that engineers have probably thought about this, to access all eight of those spots. I mean, because otherwise you're gonna have, you know, one unit, you're gonna be able to park three cars there, the other unit you might be able to park four. And then it's just consistently using the road. And I think here it's not necessarily a problem, there's street-side parking. But I just want us to be mindful, but it makes sure there's enough space to access those spots.
So the TRC did review this project with our engineering department, with the planning department, so I'm gonna defer default to that. The town is accepting this driveway width as part of this constant plan. And acceptable for a residential type of use. So the driveway widths are varying based on the type of use. You can have perpendicular, you can have forty-five-degree angled parking stalls and one-way driveway approaches. To support what the UDO and the TRC have determined, I think that this is an acceptable width for that, for that shared access way driveway for the two units. For the, the two properties and the four units, each duplex.
If I may, the requirements of the UDO for a single aisle is twenty foot and for a double aisle is twenty-four foot. So it is a little bit small.
Normally there would be a little turnaround bump out at the end of the shared drive to facilitate what you're talking about. But I'm assuming this does not have any curb and gutter, any channelization, so I guess if you go off, you just go off into the, into the grass and you'd make your own way. So effectively, I guess it's, you got a few more foot before you hit the fence there.
To, to that comment, there, there could be a consideration that you can discuss with the applicant. The board could present to the applicant to maybe have a hammerhead, a small kind of dimensioned requirement to have a little hammerhead on the end of that second lot there. To allow for the, the vehicle, a vehicle to back up into. But staff did not propose that as a recommendation at this time.
And my only concern is, and I've saying this for years, is that the configuration works for mid-sized sedans. But most, when you look at a lot of our townhouse communities now, the reality is pickup trucks and large SUVs are usually predominant. In ideal world, it works. In the real world, it's gonna be tight.
But. Yeah, if, if I may, Chair, so staff has been working with the applicant, really discussing this, designing this approach, because you can see the building elevation there. It's, it's representative of what you would consider as a single-family detached product. So you're kind of in a sense disguising a duplex unit into what might otherwise be considered a single-family detached home. To accomplish that, you're not having a, a single-car garage or a two-car garage being put onto the structure. Rather, you're, you're relocating the parking to the back of the property. In looking at this design, it, there is, they've already been a reduction of that front setback. So if there is some kind of discussion point where there is concern about the width of that driveway. We could consider having a reduction of that front setback to bring the structures closer to the street on Front Street, therefore increasing the width of that driveway. That will be my recommendation to have the applicant and as a, to consider that as a design option. I feel like we're making more out of this than it is, but why do we have such large front setbacks on something like this when we're, we're essentially in the downtown area? Should it be closer to the road anyway? That's, so the, the first drafts of this duplex did have it further back. And so staff was, okay, well, where do we put this parking? How do we fit the driveway on the site? And that's where we decided to push the buildings a bit forward towards Front Street. That's why I'm kind of entertaining that concept as we can push the buildings even further forward to accommodate for a larger, a larger width for a driveway as a possibility. Yeah, in my opinion, they should be as close to the road as possible, and I didn't, I don't see a walkway from the sidewalk to the front doors either. I think, I think we, if we're trying to, in my mind, this is downtown and it needs to be walkable. And I don't care about parking, I'll just say that right out. They can park anywhere they want to, it's downtown, doesn't matter. So parking shouldn't be an issue here, no matter what, whether there's parking spaces in there or not. And in fact, I don't think this is dense enough for this area, but I understand we're, we're getting there. And so this is denser than it was before. So I just, anything we can make it to look more urban and less suburban would be great if we really want to do the downtown like we're putting in the downtown plan. Alright. All right.
All right, any other questions? If not, if not, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir. The applicant is here.
Would the applicant like to address the commission, planning board?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Garan Bostic. I'm the applicant of Front Street Duplexes. I'm an Eagle Scout of Troop 3213 and an N C S U student, and now I'm a field superintendent for a custom home building company in Cary. And I have a big passion for building beautiful projects. And my goal here was to create something nice for families and young professionals, just like myself, to live at. This is gonna be a personal house of mine and I plan to live here. And a couple of reasons I fell in love with Clayton was the small town feel, as well as the southern charm it had. And I think that this is a gentle increase in density, as well as an opportunity to create a spot for people who want to live close to downtown like myself. I love being able to like, well, soon I'm gonna love to be able to like, walk to Deep River or go grab a coffee or go to the farmer's market. And I think that building something nicer will attract, you know, like that kind of person who wants to live in downtown. So that's my goal here. That's why we put parking in the back, because I wanted to try and make it look appealing from Front Street. The second entrance I was planning on putting on the side. So you have one entrance on the front and then you'll have a sidewalk that comes kind of around and then curves just around that corner and you'll have the door right there. It's easier to put the doors on the front, but I just thought it would make it look better from Front Street. So I saw that in design guidelines and wanted to go for it. And just wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity and answer any questions you had.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none, hopefully we have some statements of consistency for you to review. And after you review them, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Applewhite?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of this rezoning request based on consistency with the future land use map in the adopted 2045 comprehensive growth plan in that the properties are designated as downtown neighborhood and downtown support in the future land use map. Goal L U one moves to preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in the appropriate areas. Policy L U 1.1 seeks to review development proposals for consistency with the future land use map. Policy L U 1.2 seeks to encourage developments which incorporate high density design and enhance the quality of life for existing and future residents of the town. Policy L U 1.6 aims to promote development that this reduces transportation impact, shortens trips, improves circulation, enhances public safety. Goal L U three seeks to encourage a range of housing types and lot sizes that will meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes and ages. Policy L U 3.1 seeks to encourage a range of housing types based on the available infrastructure proximity to services and amenities and compatibility with existing developments as described in the future land use map. Policy D T 1.3 moves to support adaptive reuse of underutilized sites and buildings to revitalize downtown. And policy D T 1.4 aims to increase residential activity projects in downtown. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive growth plan encourages residential uses in this area and the request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in this area.
We have a motion for approval by Board Member Applewhite. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Saraski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Conrad, I have one quick question about this. So one thing I noticed on here is that there is a driveway from this on to Front Street. Is that gonna be closed? I didn't see that in the, in the plan. I just want to make sure we're not having cars pull up. If the intent is, which it sounded like from the applicant, the intent is to have a walking front. Are we gonna close that? There's, there's just some curb that would need to be replaced. That's all.
Yeah, so the concept plan does not show the driveway accessing the property. So our staff will discuss this with the applicant and as a possible addition, just point of clarification. Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you. Next item is item 5B, 2024 dash 27 C Z M Amelia Town, Amelia Church Town Homes. Now, here for staff.
Am I talking too loud with this? Or is it okay? Perfect, okay. Sometimes I think I'm a little bit too loud. Okay, perfect. So this is a conditional rezoning project. The name is Amelia Church Town Homes. So the request is to rezone conditionally one property from O F I, Office Institutional, to C Z R Conditional Res zoning Residential. The property size is about 20 acres. The existing use is vacant, although it looks like there were some tree clearing on the left side where Amelia Church Road is. The location is between Amelia Church Road and Shore Johnson Road on the north. So once again, this slide is just to show that we are meeting the requirements of the general statute in terms of public noticing. So there were one meeting, neighborhood meeting on March 5th, 2024, before the application took place. However, only landowners within the 100 linear feet foot was notified. So we have to revise that. So this is why there's a second meeting that took place yesterday, December 16, 2024. And then this time, landowners of the radius of 300 linear feet foot was notified as per the U D O section. Also, the application from neighborhood meeting was not correct. So the application was still mentioning a 100 linear foot radius. So the application is now changed to represent the new U D O standards. Also, no attendees from the yesterday's meeting. So overall, the project data, I just put some of the data here. So the proposed number of units is 173 single family attached dwelling. This is the only type of product that we're finding in this project. The proposed density is 8.72 units per acre. Two parking spaces per unit. One is equivalent to the garage space and one per driveway. There's 38 provided parking spaces for guests, but the required is 44. So one of the condition is to have 38 instead of 44 for the guests' parking spaces. Open spaces will be 12.5% of the side area, but that's just a minimum.
Say that again. You said one of the conditions, about the 38 to 44?
Yep, so the, so what's required in terms of guests' parking spaces is 44 spaces, but they are asking to have 38 parking spaces. That's into the conditions. So yeah, active open spaces required is 1.24 acres. That represents a minimum. The lot has a R C A, which is a resource conservation area. So there's wetlands on it and some other conservation area. So right now, there's 57,000 square foot of R C A. After, they're proposing to reduce the total R C A to 35,000 square feet. There's four entry points where you can see with the arrows on the map. And then there's two storm water management with some enhancements to them to be considered as open space. There's also a 10 foot proposed right away dedication on Amelia Church Road, so for future sidewalk or multi-use path. So you had received a new package today. This is why you have the printed papers. So some proposed modification was made by staff and some proposed modification was made by the applicant. So two by staff, so the buffer along the R L L districts is updated to be 20 foot. So what happened is that a type C buffer is a 30 foot requirements for primitive buffer. But then when you're adding a fence, you can reduce that buffer to 20. So it removed 10, 10 foot of the 30 foot requirement. So the 15 foot type C buffer was not correct. And we want to apply at least the minimum requirement of the U D O in terms of buffers. So that was revised. Also, there's no dimensional requirements of the product. So usually when we're having conditional rezoning packages like this, we have like a table that states by product, the lot width, the dimensional, all dimensional requirements of the product. But there was none. So that's a proposed modification of the conditions of approval. It's to add that kind of table to it. So that was the second proposed modification by staff. The applicant also has a proposed modification to, so if you're seeing in the narrative and the conditions of approval under open spaces requirement. So the open spaces required is the same as the provided, but the provided states minimum. So required would still, it's a 1.24 acres. They put provided 1.24 acres as a minimum. So what happened is that we had some really specified square footage of open space before. And I'll let the applicant talk about it too, but it was a concern about not being able to have that square footage into the site plan review and not going into a major modification or a minor modification. But this, the provided is a minimum, but there's, the applicant is still have the ideal to propose way more than the minimum. It's just, right now, it's so conceptual that the the number of square footage is really hard to pinpoint in terms of what can really be the square footage of empty spaces for that project. So that was the modification proposed by the applicant. In terms of consistency with the comprehensive growth plan, right now, it's in a medium density residential land use. And we have some observation with the staff is that the gross residential density of the project is 1.72 units per acre. The project only includes single family attached unit. And the minimum provided open space area of the project is 12.5%. So if you're looking at the medium density residential in the future land use map, the gross residential density is three to five units per acre. The unit type is 100, single family detached homes, but can have 50% of attached units. And there is a minimum required of open space of 20%. I also put the high density residential in there, so you can see the difference. But some recommendation would be, it looks like it aligns more with a high density residential land use. So the consideration for this evening is, should the rezoning be approved, the concept plan and associated condition of approval will be tied to the land in accordance with the general statute. And the staff recommendation is perfect. The recommendation is approval and inconsistent with the 2045 comprehensive growth plan. So this is the motion number two in the provided consistent statement sheets. That was the end of the presentation. I don't know if you're still seeing something on your screen, but I don't have it on my, so.
Do you all have it on your screen, Mr. Sir?
No.
No.
We have anyone from?
Yeah, I think.
I'll check.
Okay. The applicant is also with us in the room.
Oh, so you were finished?
Yes.
Okay, any questions of staff? Raskin?
When, if this went through, this got approved, when would it, when would the full site plan be approved? When would they be able to start turning dirt? When do we think?
Not yet.
I can wait if this is a question for the applicant. I have a specific reason I'm asking this question. As I'm sure you know.
So from, from our standpoint, we would need to submit the preliminary plat and the subdivision, the construction documents prior to deterring dirt, which would require this project to be approved by town council.
But that's still, that would still have to happen after this approval. The reason I ask that question is because their traffic study said that their design year was 2025. I'm gonna go ahead and guess that these are not going to be built in 2025.
Right, then the applicant might be able to articulate the construction schedule as well.
Yeah, yeah. The only reason, the reason I bring this up, Conrad, and I'm talking directly to you, because we talked about this at the C T P meeting about, look, this is, this is very, this is looking very close. You know, with the, with the Gateway 42 plan and the other plans that we have and the future land use and the C T P. This area is not gonna be like it is now in five years, especially if the copper district happens like we think it's gonna happen. And I think this is, there's gonna be a different effect on traffic out there. And I think this is, there's going to be a different effect on traffic out there in five years than now. And this would be one of those cases where it'd be nice to, I'm not, we can't, we can't make them do this because it's not in the ordinance, but I'm just throwing this out there for conversation. It'd be nice if we looked at a model run or what the future may hold in this area or how much traffic is in Amelia Church that is cutting from Barbara Mill over to Forty-two and vice versa. Because it's gonna be a lot, I saw on there that's seven thousand A D T. It's gonna be a lot more than that in five, ten years. And so I just want to make sure that what the applicant is doing here with one turn lane is gonna be sufficient in five or ten years from now, which I'm not sure it's going to be, but I also don't know another way that we could potentially make the applicant do something right now with the current ordinance. That, that's something that I think we need looking in, into changing.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as the year that it should be looked at, that's the other thing, is that if we're, if we're gonna keep, if we're, if we're looking at our certain ordinances, we should make them look out beyond build year as well. And, and that's typical in a lot of other municipalities where you look beyond build year when you're doing your analysis.
Any other questions? Would the streets allow on-street parking? Uh, would it be wide enough? In, because it looks like instead of being P V A, inside they're all going to be dedicated public streets. That's what's listed, public streets instead of public vehicle areas. So will it be? Because every, every, every community that's like this right now that's existing in Clayton, the garage and the one space will not hold the cars for each one of those residents. So. And I was wondering, and if you look at a lot of the communities in Clayton right now, you see a lot of on-street parking that gets very convoluted. And especially if they're parking on both sides, it leaves a single a single entry point that sometimes you wonder if fire apparatus can get through. We've had this come up over and over again. And uh, this is going to be a dedicated street, it appears, because it's listed as a public street, even though it, it looks more like a public vehicle area, but it says public streets in here. Would it be wide enough to hold parking on both sides? I, I don't see the dimensions of the street. Oh, yeah, twenty-seven back to back, okay, I see it now. So no, it wouldn't allow parking on both sides.
Well, the, the distance between the driveways wouldn't allow it either. There would only be certain places on here where you could even park.
Right, I know. You're right, because you'll be, you're right. And looking at the, how it's designed. And then the thirty-eight parking spaces, it looks like the one, it looks like it's more like thirty-six or thirty-seven. The one right next to the dumpster layout, if that's, looks like the corner, if that's bricked in or something, the corner of that is right on the parking space, almost making that parking space unusable. I don't know if you saw that, one of the thirty-eight. Yeah. So when, when I see the thirty-eight and I'm looking at the parking spaces, I already see a couple that, you know, being counted, it would probably wouldn't be used. So I was wondering for staff, if we know historically, the biggest complaint that we've gotten, and if you look at some of these current neighborhoods, is the parking and how dangerous it is emergency response with the on-street parking. Why did we recommend allow moving forward with thirty-eight versus the minimum, which would, to me, wouldn't have been enough, but the minimum of forty-four? I mean, it's draw, you have thirty-eight uh drawn out, but it, it appears even that thirty-eight wouldn't be usable. So let's get, get away from that. Let's just talk about the reduction of six.
So that, that is what is being requested by the applicant to have that reduction in the guest parking spaces from what's required will be forty-four to being thirty-eight spaces. So some ways to?
I can, I can venture a guess for the applicant, but I'm assuming you're requesting that because if you tried to add on-street parking, that would take away from your open space minimum. I would assume that's the reason. So if, if, whether they answer or not when they come up, would the town be open to changing their typical section through this? Because my main concern is we're showing this as a public street and of course they're showing what to me seems like a pretty old typical section from the town if it's from two thousand and ten. Um, I would, I would hope that that's been updated since then, but if not, you know, whatever. Um, but the thing that worries me is right now Johnston, was it Johnston Shore or?
Short.
Short Johnson Road right now is a full-access intersection. And when N C forty-two becomes widened here in the next several years, once the stip finally goes through and it's like fully approved for construction, that's gonna be a right in, right out. So current developments on that property and any future developments that could come in the future, you're gonna have so many people using this development as a cross-through just to get to Amelia Church so they can turn left to go towards N C, or to I forty-two. And I know the, any future residents of the properties are not gonna like that. So if, if the town is open to changing the typical section, they could add more on-street parking because it seems like there's more than adequate space there in the amenity. And then if you can shorten the typical to accommodate the typical section, that would help you gain some space for the public area that your parking wouldn't necessarily infringe on to worry about your minimum open space.
Those are some great points. Um, one of the challenges with public streets is to not have the vehicles that are parked back, back up into that public street. So that's where they've proposed a private street. And by the mail kiosk. Um, if there is in a, if there's a need for additional parking spaces, you would probably be looking at creating a separate, an internal parking lot that is off that public street, possibly just south of the units ninety-four through ninety-nine. Where additional parking may be provided, but that would be impacting some of the open space now. And talking with the applicant, they are providing over the required minimums. So that's something that maybe the applicant can, can also speak to the board with regards to maybe providing additional couple parking spaces at the expense of some open space square footage area.
Can I make two comments on that? One is, um, I don't think this typical section should change because the wider you make it, the less safe it's gonna be. So I, I think the typical section is fine. Um, second thing is, is that if, I just noticed the private street, I didn't notice that before, so thank you for pointing that out. If we can write into some sort of condition that that will never be taken over by maintenance by the town, I'd, I'd like to see that as a condition just because twenty years from now when we're all gone and the residents there are all voters and it's a completely different town council. And they go, oh, voters, oh, we can take over that, and they shouldn't. So I've seen it happen in practice. So I think we should do whatever we can to make sure that stays private in perpetuity as much as we can.
That's noted, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Would the advocate like to uh speak on this issue?
Thank you. It's John. Uh, I'm Spencer Terry. I'm a senior project manager with Butler Engineering, um, forty-one thirty Park Lake Avenue in Raleigh. Um, so uh, everything that you've seen here, you guys have discussed, you guys have great questions. Couple of things I wanted to point out right off the bat is that this property was already approved and has a standing special use permit for a hundred and ninety-six quad units. So it'd be two adjoining walls instead of single adjoining walls or two adjoining walls. Um, we are asking to reduce the density or the number of units that we have from one ninety-six to one seventy-three, which thereby reduces the density of the property. Um, and the reason for that is that we have a different product that we'd like to bring. Uh, we, we initially went with a special use permit was a for-rent product. Uh, this is for sale. And uh, this was the mechanism in order for us to uh, change that out. Go from the special use permit to a zoning that will work for the, for the property that we want to develop. Um. We have, uh, open space was one of the things that got brought up. So the twelve and a half percent was calculated either with, I, I believe it was calculated off the old U D O because we have been working through this over the last nine months. Um, so we were, the requirement we had was, was twelve point five percent. We actually are providing in the layout you see right now, twenty-five percent, which is five point two four acres. We don't want to be locked into that number specifically because as we develop, it's highly contentious on the amenity center, specifically the, the wet ponds that we're proposing. If those change in design and we end up with slightly less, say five point five or five point two five or five point one, uh, and it doesn't meet that specific number, then we would have to come back to board to ask for those types of changes. So what we want to do in those cases is uh, work with staff to come up with a percentage that is uh, beyond the minimum, but is flexible enough for us to make design changes. Um, we talked about RCA, the fifty-seven thousand square feet, that's the existing RCA on the site. The twenty-one thousand uh, square foot reduction is for the stream crossing to Short Johnson. Um, that takes us to Short Johnson, um, discussing Mr. Gleason's comments with Short Johnson. Um, what he's referring to is that it could be used as a jug handle, people from Amelia Church cutting through. Uh, Short Johnson is a dead-end road, there's very little development on it right now. Uh, but the town is proposing a fire station that we'll also get to in a little while at Short Johnson and Forty-two. Um, that's pretty much it. As far as parking internally, uh, we're showing thirty-eight parking stalls specifically for the dog park and the uh, larger open space area. That's why you have the private street because it's associated with that directly. So it'd, it'd be maintained by the H O A. Uh, we can add more parking stalls if we need to. Uh, regarding on-street parking, um, it's frowned upon. We could look at um, conditions if we have to. Uh, the H O A could potentially take care of that through their H O A um, requirements. So they could build it in there that they reduce or, or eliminate on-street parking. But we are producing, we are providing a minimum of two and it's almost three when you look at it. These prop, these houses are set twenty-five feet off of the right-of-way. And then the, the, the road itself is, um, if you look at the detail, the back of curb is another eight feet. So you're really getting um, about thirty-three feet in there or just shy enough of what you need for two cars in the driveway plus a car in the garage. So there's adequate parking for a townhouse development. We obviously are looking for the reduction just so that we can um, potentially do things in that open space at a later date. But if we need to add the other six spaces back, we can do that. So um, I tried to address as many of the comments that you guys had right off the bat, but if you have any other, so I'm certainly open to that. The other thing I want to mention is that sewer. Uh, somebody asked if we were gonna build um, in twenty twenty-five. Yes, if we can get through rezoning uh, in January and February, then we would immediately start working with staff to produce the site plan and the CDs. We will do that either concurrently or one after the other, but most likely concurrently. Um, and we would like to, we would like to start construction in twenty twenty-five, towards the end of the year. Um, that will bleed into twenty twenty-six, but the bigger caveat to this that we need to discuss is the sewer. And we've worked extensively over the last year with Rich, his, his department, the town manager, along with engineering. Um, the sewer that you see presented here was something that we had agreed to with staff before some of the developments that have unfolded in the last few months. Um, at a minimum, we were looking at running proposed gravity down Short Johnson and tying into the Walnut Creek Pump Station to the north. However, uh, through our coordination with the city, what we're ultimately gonna do is um, through three different projects, our project, uh, the Craig, Craig Davis project that is uh, on, off of Short Johnson in the both of those locations and the fire department are, which is the cities. We're working together to, to put in a gravity main down Walnut Creek, which will tie to the Glen Haven Pump Station on the other side of Barbara Mill. That actually is part of a larger uh, interceptor project that will eventually take Walnut Creek and Glen Haven offline and tie to the Country Lane Pump Station. So this, this is actually helping um, facilitate and expedite a, a portion of that larger project, which is a pretty big deal for this area. So I just want to bring that to you guys' attention. Do you guys have any other questions?
Any questions of the applicant?
Uh, one question on the doorstep of the project. You have a proposed uh, twenty-foot type C buffer with a fence. Is that gonna be uh, natural with existing um, woods and whatnot, or is that gonna be planted?
Preferably. So if we could keep, we would like to keep it natural. Uh, it reduces costs on our end. If there are holes in there that don't meet the opacity requirement, one will have an opaque six-foot fence, so that'll just be completely, you can't see through it, won't have visibility through that. But um, yeah, we will supplement, uh, plot, uh, we will supplement our plantings for any open areas. Otherwise, we will plant the entire thing.
And the, the fence would be on the, the project side?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, and that fence allows us to get the twenty feet. It is typically a thirty-foot buffer. This is uh, directly out of the U D O, but if you put in an opaque fence, it'll allow you to, a reduction of ten feet. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this matter? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the board for their consideration. Are there any comments from the board? If not, we have.
My concern is parking, parking, parking inconsistency. Um, because our new code would not allow this, you know, and is our new code even allow us to count uh, parking space in a single-car garage as parking? Was there a change there or am I mistaken?
We'll look into it, but I think that was the condition that the garage was, can be used as a parking space. Because I don't think this is, so the parking space should be um, not be a garage space. So they're asking the garage space to be one of the parking spaces required.
Did, did, did the current code, did the new code change that? And, and I might be mistaken, but I was thinking that the current, the new code had a prohibition of using single-car garages as required parking.
Yes, so in, sorry. So the applicant's mentioned about, uh, maybe you can address the board the way you can record it, but just to confirm, the U D O section six point nine with regards to garages used to meet parking requirements, single-family attached, one-car garage integral or attached to the S F A shall not receive credit towards off-street parking. So that if you have a single-car garage, and these are single-car garage townhomes? Yeah, so they, they are, it's a single-car garage product. So that's why we're not, we're not able to credit that garage space as satisfying the, the minimum parking requirement. But if you had a question, you had an addition to that, if, if the board would like to entertain the applicant as a, provide a follow-up to that?
Yes, just for the record, so um, if we need to widen the driveways to eighteen feet to allow double parking next to it, regardless of the single, uh, the single-car garage, we can, we've got the space inadequacy to do that.
Yeah, I think that's desperately needed.
Yes.
Um, because that's one thing, whenever you get a project complete, coming back and adding parking spaces is harsh. And, and the council um, is very um, concerned about parking that blocks the sidewalks. Um, they seem, they, they have a hard time about it, so I would not lead with that. Uh, yeah.
Yes, so from the, and part of the condition. Yes, so from the, and part of the conditions that we have is that at a minimum, the depth of the driveway is 25 feet from the sidewalk itself, from the edge of sidewalk. So that's something that we try to accommodate.
Yeah, but you got 18, you got two.
No, initially, initially it said 35. He was counting the sidewalk.
If you were trying to back, I understand what you guys are saying, it's 35 feet from the back of curb, but it's 25 feet from the edge of the back of the sidewalk, that we're showing right now.
Right, and I was just making the claim, I think the first time you came up, you had it at 35, that two cars could fit, but...
Yeah, if we widen it to 18.
...the sidewalk.
Well, correct, but you guys are also concerned about on-street parking, right? So I'm just saying, if people are going to, you know, park in an inconsiderate manner, there are multiple ways of doing that. However, we're willing to work with the staff to ensure that if we need double parking in front of the garage, we can accommodate that. And you see that in a single-family houses all the time. They'll come in with a 12-foot entrance, and then it widens, and you can get two cars there, and they can maneuver around, and we can accommodate that with this plan. And we're not opposed to manipulating some of the townhouses, because we don't have, we're not at that level yet. We haven't engaged an architect to give us the actual full-blown plan yet, so.
So for the record, if we put that as a condition of our approval tonight, that you put the 18 feet...
Then we will accommodate that.
18 feet, yeah. Any other comments from the board? And I concur with Mr. Liskum, good catch, Mr. Liskum. Parking has always been a major concern, and for, for years, we've approved these plans very similar, then we ride back through the neighborhoods, and we like, did we approve that? We see the on-street parking and how convoluted it is and how dangerous it looks. So thank you.
There's only one other thing that, for a clarification, should this cross-access over to the apartments, should that be listed as a parking lot and should, what they're calling a private street, should that be listed more as a parking lot instead of a private street? It is confusing. And for posterity's sake, I guess you could say, when somebody is looking at this 20 years from now, you know, it's, it's really a parking lot more so than a private street. So that's just a point out, it's terminology.
Totally, totally understand. The, the actual parking lot that's next to the apartment complex is that. That will be controlled by the HOA, the private street also, but it acts more as a street than it does a parking lot, but it is more like a drive aisle, if you look at that from that manner. So we're including the parking street over by the amenity area as a, as a functioning drive aisle for that amenity area. So that's how that was looked at.
Really, my only major concern was the parking, and I appreciate you. I wish y'all would have led with the two, with the 18-foot wide driveways personally, but I think that was a good concession that you made quickly, but I do wish you would have led with it, because I think that would have taken some concern off of us.
Yes, and we apologize for that. Again, this is a conceptual layout, so we're looking at, and, and also, I just want to reiterate, we have a standing special use permit that allows us to do this with 90, 196 units. So we've already taken into consideration that we want to start reducing some of that. So we have no problems coming in here and adjusting any of these items in order to, to accommodate your guys' request.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll just echo that, and thank you for providing that. The parking and Board Member Sarasky was just bringing up the units behind La Cina, near the Clayton Fitness, and, you know, when these developments get built, the parking's final paper meets the, the requirements of the UDO, but then when there are new projects coming up around it, the neighbors come to these meetings and will complain about the fact that there's already problems parking with the development that's going to happen in this area. I can imagine that there are going to be people that are going to be parking there to visit friends or to go to the, the shops that will be close by, and I was saying, any consideration y'all can make to increasing the parking amount for both visitors and for what you've already mentioned to us. I'm fine with the, including the widening of the driveways as part of the condition, but as y'all just move forward, prepare, you might get asked to create more parking.
Understood, and thank you.
Thank you. Any more board comments? If not, after you reviewed the consistency statements, oh, I'm sorry, I already did that. Yes, yeah. After you have the opportunity to review the consistency statements, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve this. For approval, it is inconsistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan, but I make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning request, while the request is inconsistent with the future land use map and the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan, in that the properties are designated as medium-density residential in the future land use map. Goal LU1 seeks to preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Policy LU1.1 seeks to manage future growth and encourage quality development through the implementation of the Comprehensive Plan, the Unified Development Code, UDC, and other plans and regulations adopted by the Town Council. Policy LU1.2 seeks to encourage developments which incorporate high-quality design and enhance the quality of life for existing and future residents of the town. Strategy LU1.2.2 seeks to encourage high-quality design and residential projects. Goal M2 seeks to support interconnected street systems that efficiently disperse vehicular traffic. This action is reasonable in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Growth Plan encourages residential uses in this area. The current land use designation would be more suitable for high-density residential designation, and I make a motion to approve this with the contingency that they would modify their parking to an 18-foot wide at each unit to allow for additional parking.
I'll second.
Motion by Board Member Dupree, seconded by Board Member Liskum.
Can I make one clarification? Driveway, 18-foot wide driveway, using the parking area, so just want to make sure...
18-foot driveway.
And additional, and additional parking.
That's right, and, and additional parking if we can find somewhere to put that, to get up to the minimum.
Of 44.
Correct.
Spaces. Did we capture that, staff? We have a motion with conditions by Board Member Dupree, seconded by Board Member Liskum. Any uneasiness? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is Item 6, informal discretion and public comment. If there are any members of the public that would like to speak? Hearing none, any member of the board?
Wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Well, this is my last meeting as the chair, my terms are up, and I just wanted to say that I've enjoyed my six years on the Clayton Planning Board, and I've thoroughly enjoyed working with each one of you. So thank you, carry on.
I think tonight's my last meeting too. Did you term off, was it passed, you couldn't re-up?
Right.
Okay. Yes.
I think Mr. Liskum is also in the same position, but this is our last meeting. Thank you.
Chair Moore, if I may, just to express a thanks and gratitude to the boards, I wish y'all a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and special recognition to you, Mr. Chairman Moore, and Board Member Liskum, and thank you for your service, much appreciated. We do have some, some gifts for you, so make sure to stop and see us on your way out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. No further comments, I entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion by Board Member Liskum, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Williams, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.